Good morning, Bellingham residents. Cindy McNulty here, your Select Board Chairwoman, coming to you live with Dennis Frain, our Town Administrator. And we are here today to continue this series of informational overviews that we've been providing you with, starting way back in the days of COVID when it was crazy and just letting you know what we were doing. We've talked to you about some of the developments in town. And today, we're going to focus specifically on our town meeting, which is coming up next week, Wednesday, at the high school. We're going to talk first with Dennis, and then Mary McKinnon is going to join us, our CFO, and then finally Larry Spazata, our Town Clerk. So Dennis, I'm going to turn it over to you. Why don't we just talk like high level, what to expect?
It's nice to be here, not talking about COVID.
I know.
That's all we were talking about.
And no masks, which is nice.
And you know, there's been some great information that's come out of these sessions that you had. I know Michael Connor, you had a conversation with him back a year ago about development activities in town.
Right.
And a lot of it is happening now.
Right.
Roadways, construction projects, et cetera. And talked about how those come to fruition. And that's actually, you can go to the town's website and find all of these on our YouTube page.
Right.
So good information out there. But I know we wanted to talk about town meeting today. And really, town meeting is the oldest form of government in our country and the purest form of democracy. And we're very fortunate in the Northeast that there are still towns that have a town meeting form of government. When you think about a city council form of government, the city council hears requests from departments and they put together annual budgets and they adopt the budget. Nationally, statewide, it's the legislature. On a national level, it's Congress and the Senate come and vote on the budget. On a town like Bellingham, it's the residents of the community that come out and ultimately make the decision on whether or not they're going to pass the various line items that are presented.
Right.
So it's up to us as town officials to make sure that we're prepared.
Right.
And we have the answers and we have the information to justify what it is that we're presenting.
Right.
But long before it's presented, town meeting is May 25th, which is a Wednesday, always the fourth Wednesday of the month of May, unless it's continued. But that is town meeting. It'll be 7:30 in the high school auditorium. And we'll have quite a bit of business there. But Article One, every year in spring, is the town's operating budget.
Right.
Our town operates all in. I know Mary's going to talk a little bit about the budget and the process, but it's about $80 million a year. When I started here a few decades ago, our total budget was about $12 million. But like everything, yeah, like everything.
That must mean it's almost time to retire, Dennis.
Yeah. Numbers have increased.
No, we don't want you to retire.
But we start the process in October. As you know, the Board of Selectmen or the Select Board issues a policy statement, talking about general guidelines for the coming year, what we're looking to accomplish. And we meet with the various departments in town and talk about the goals, whether it's public safety or town hall or the schools, et cetera. And we try to figure out how we're going to meet those goals, maybe over two, three-year timeframe. But we put together a plan and departments submit budgets beginning in December to me. And I begin reviewing those budgets. And this process is all lined out in the town's charter.
Right.
The town's charter is what governs our community. And as a general law, it was enacted, approved by the state legislature when the town approved the charter 30 years ago. So and it's reviewed every 10 years, as you know. But the budget process is outlined in the town charter. And the first step is the Select Board issues their policy statement, then budgets are submitted by all town departments to me and our Chief Financial Officer. And I review those budgets during the month of January. We meet with departments, we scrutinize, we try and make sure that the recommendations that we make to the Select Board are consistent with the policy statement that the board put forward. So that goes on in January. And our objective and our, you know, our requirement is that we present a balanced budget to the Select Board. And we do that, as you know, we have a public hearing the end of February where the Select Board will meet with town departments. And they'll present to the Select Board their requests and my recommendations and presented and reviewed by the Select Board. Departments come in and justify whatever it is they're looking for based on those recommendations. And ultimately, it's the Select Board that makes the final decision as to what's presented or what's going to be presented to town meeting.
Right.
Those recommendations are presented to the Finance Committee in March. So your budget, the Select Board's budget is presented to the Finance Committee in March. And the Finance Committee holds a series of public hearings. Public's invited, anyone can come. Those meetings are all archived in the town's YouTube channel, so anyone can go in and look at the recommendations and the hearings that were held for all of those matters. And then finally, the Finance Committee publishes their report and recommendations. Those are available at the Town Clerk's office 10 days before town meeting, so they're available now. And then we go to town meeting and we present everything that we've been working on for the last seven, eight months to town meeting. So oftentimes, residents come to town meeting, they think, oh, boy, you know, where did they dream this one up? And why don't we know about it? And why haven't we heard about it? And I think a lot of it has to do with the fact that everybody's so busy today. You don't have time to sit and necessarily check out the town's webpage to see when a hearing's coming up or find out when the Finance Committee's meeting. But all those things are there. We have a calendar that has all of the board meetings listed on there with links. And the nice thing now, one of the good things that came out of COVID is we have most of our meetings, not just on access Bellingham, but virtually.
Through Zoom.
You can join a Zoom link and watch from the comfort of your home, which I do. I watch more meetings now than I ever did before because I can sit at home and watch them.
Right. Before you get into the meat and potatoes of this upcoming meeting, one of the things we really want to stress to the residents is we need you to come to town meeting. Your vote matters. There have been at least three of the last five town meetings that I've been at presenting as a Select Board member where we'd have barely over 100 people. And those 100 people are deciding the future of Bellingham. And I applaud those folks that do come, but we really want to bring the information to you so that you can make a good, solid, informed decision come Wednesday. Like Dennis said, we're not just, you know, throwing this together. We are obligated by a number of laws in town. Every week, the week before any of our town municipalities have a meeting, we have to post that agenda. And that's to let you know what we're talking about so that if you're interested, we want you to come. It's not meant to be just the Select Board running the town of Bellingham. I think those of you who know me know I'm very invested in what the residents want. And, you know, again, it's really the main reason why we're doing these informational types of things for you folks, so that you can be informed and hopefully ultimately get you excited and motivated to come not only to town meeting, but also to vote during our town election. So having said that, Dennis, why don't you highlight a couple of the key articles that are going to be presented?
Sure. Article One is the town's operating budget. Mary's going to be talking about that. And that's what funds town government from July 1st all the way until June 30th. I say town government, obviously, and schools as well, school and municipal. So that funds your public safety, your parks and recreation. And if residents had a question on a particular budget, hey, why don't we have more playgrounds? Or hey, why don't we have, you know, more fire trucks? Or why are we buying an ambulance? That's the opportunity to ask those questions. And it's up to us as department heads and public officials, elected officials, to be able to answer those questions. And also, maybe to get, maybe to get a little advice or information or interest on, maybe there's some things unmet needs that certainly we need to take a look at. And a lot of the things that we do are a direct result of conversations that we have in town.
Right.
With the residents. And that's the way it should be.
Exactly.
Certainly, it's local government, you know, the residents of a community have the greatest ability to be involved, obviously, in local government. When you think you go and you vote at the state for state officials and national officials, very important. But your local officials in your town meeting directly impacts the quality of life in your community and the things that we're doing. So we always welcome it. We don't take it personally when residents come in and they ask questions. And oftentimes, good suggestions are made and there are improvements that we can make.
Right.
So some of the things that we're looking at, big picture, just to give people a flavor of the type of things that we look at, one of the items we're going to be doing is covering our snow and ice deficit for the year. $500,000 for snow and ice removal over the past year, in addition to the budget that was established at $275,000. So we'll be appropriating $500,000 to add to that budget to close out the year. One of the few things that state law allows you to deficit spend once you declare an emergency is your snow and ice budget, because you can't stop the snow when you have to respond to keeping the roads safe. So that's one of the items that you'll see presented to town meeting. Fire Department's looking for a new ambulance. And with the, I hate to use the expression because it's so overused, but the supply chain issues that we have in our country right now, that ambulance probably won't arrive for at least another year. So we've got to be forward-thinking. So we'll be appropriating the funds for a new ambulance. New ambulance today, I know sometimes people are shocked when they see the cost of these things. $400,000 almost for an ambulance. But that's the cost of doing business and providing public safety. You see those ambulances running through the town constantly. Obviously, our fire department does a phenomenal job. We're all paramedic. And it's one of the things we take great pride in is our fire services and our paramedic services. So we'll be appropriating funds for a new ambulance, along with some other things as well. But I just thought I'd highlight a couple of things that may be of interest for residents. One of the other things that we're looking at is residents can submit matters for consideration of town meeting by petition. So at an annual town meeting, if you have a matter that you want considered, whether it's a rezoning or some other matter, it takes 10 signatures. It takes an article and 10 signatures in order to present that matter to town meeting and have it considered as part of the Finance Committee's hearings. Maybe the Planning Board has to have a hearing on it and ultimately goes to town meeting. And one such matter is Hartford Avenue rezoning. There is a property owner that owns several properties, as you know, up on Hartford Avenue that have been abandoned for quite some time. There are residences that have been, purchased those properties, they've been abandoned. Many residents feel that that area is better suited for business. And that proposal's going to come forward. And we've had several meetings where quite a few residents have attended to voice their opposition or their support to that rezoning matter up on Hartford Avenue. And I think we have a map up on the screen now that will give you a little bit of information about where that's located. To put it in perspective, it's, most people know where the mobile gas station and the Dunkin' Donuts are, right at the intersection of North Main Street and Route 126. But there are abandoned homes there. And that rezoning is going to be presented to town meeting. There'll be somebody, for the petitioner, that will present maps and diagrams. And ultimately, it's the people that will decide whether or not that moves forward or not. And that does take a two-thirds vote, so it's not a simple matter.
If I can add to that, too, a number of residents have reached out to me on both sides of the equation for that rezoning. And what I said to all of them is it really ultimately depends on how many people show up to town meeting, either for or against that. It's not meant to be something that's, like Dennis was saying, we're not a town council. This is something that the residents have the opportunity to decide. So again, depending on where you are, on which side of the equation, it's going to ultimately come down to who shows up and who voices, who votes.
Who votes.
Right. And we're going to talk a little bit later about how we vote, but.
Absolutely.
What else did you want to highlight?
One of the other matters, Bellingham is a no dispensary, marijuana dispensary community. Dispensaries are not allowed in or permitted in the town of Bellingham. And we had a petitioner that submitted an article for rezoning to allow dispensaries in a specific area, the Williams Way, William Way Industrial Park, which is where we are right now, as a matter of fact. So it would allow marijuana dispensaries in this specific area of town. And that's another one that's had a lot of attention. And ultimately, it's up to the people to decide. However, on that, on that matter, we've been notified that the petitioner is going to withdraw that article and not present it. We won't know until that moment, but they've made that clear, that they are not going to be presenting that matter. So the marijuana dispensary article, we've been told by the petitioner, is not going to move forward. But again, ultimately, it's up to the petitioner at that moment, but they have informed us that they aren't going to go forward.
Okay.
So that's kind of a little insight into what some of the matters that we're going to be talking about. Again, the biggest, the biggest issue is the, the biggest matter before every spring town meeting is the town's operating budget, which I know Mary's going to be talking about. So I'm going to, I'm going to step aside and let Mary come up. But before I do, Memorial Day Parade is Sunday.
Yes, 1:00.
Steps off at 1:00. It's always a great parade. And we have the Commander for the USS Constitution, who's going to be our Grand Marshal. And she, first female commander in the history of the, in the USS Constitution, is going to be joined by the, by the Constitution Color Guard. So great event.
Very exciting.
And hopefully, 1:00 it steps off. From Middle School, goes down to the Town Common. So great event. Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you, Dennis. All right. We'll see you soon. Take care. All right, welcome back. We're here for Part Two, and I am joined now by our Chief Financial Officer, Mary McKinnon. Mary, it's wonderful to have you here.
Cindy, thank you for having me.
Mary's been in her position for, what'd you say, just a little over three years now, after drinking out of the fire hose for a couple of years. I have to say, Mary has been a godsend to our town. She keeps us on the straight and narrow and very informed and has really made it much more digestible to understand the magnitude of an $80 million budget. So I asked Mary to join us today just to really give a high level of what happens in our town from a revenue and an expense standpoint, so that you have the knowledge to understand what we're voting on, on Wednesday. We're not going to get into the specific budget for Wednesday. This is meant to be more of an educational, informational overview. So Mary, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Fantastic. Well, thank you. As I said, Cindy, it's great to be here. What I thought we would do today, as you and Dennis had mentioned a few moments ago, the town does in fact have just under an $80 million budget in total. We actually have five budgets that comprise that amount, the largest of which is what we refer to as our general operating budget. But then we also have four budgets for our four enterprise funds. The one budget that most folks resonate with is the general operating budget. It's what we utilize to provide all of the core services that our residents and our businesses enjoy. And so of that, you know, $80 million budget, about 70 million, just under 70 million, is our general fund budget. So what I thought we'd do today, if it's okay with you, is I thought I'd touch upon three particular areas at a real high level, because you know me, I could talk for hours about our budget itself.
You're going to have your own, you're going to have your own show coming up next, Mary.
We'll keep it high level. So what I thought we'd do is we'd talk a little bit about sort of what the revenue sources are, the funding sources for our budget, and how do we use those revenues? And what functional areas do we spend those monies to support our services? Then I thought we'd talk a little bit about the average single-family tax bill, because at the end of the day, what, what impacts the residents is the tax bills that they receive. And thirdly, which is a very popular subject here in the town of Bellingham, is what is the impact or benefit of having such a strong business base on our tax bills? What impact does it have or benefit does it have?
Perfect.
So if those are okay.
Sounds great.
With that being said, we will have some charts interspersed throughout our conversation, but we'll focus on our general operating budget, which, as I had indicated, is about $69 million. When it comes to the general fund operating budget, there are essentially four revenue streams, if you will, that fund our budget. The largest is, of course, our property tax levy. So the sum total of all of the tax bills that are paid by our residential taxpayers, as well as our businesses, our commercial industrial tax base and personal property tax bills. That tax levy, as it's called, funds 73% of our budget. So we would collect 73% of our revenue through taxation. Then we also have money that we collect from the state, which is referred to as state aid. So the state has a series of formulas that they use for communities throughout the Commonwealth. Based on those formulas, they allocate funding to all of the communities. In the town of Bellingham, that represents just over $12 million. And that's about 17 and 1/2% of our budget is funded through state aid. And when I say that, state aid, that $12 million is gross revenue, because in a moment, I'm going to talk about the money that the state takes back from us.
Right.
The other source is what we call local receipts. Local receipts are things that are generated and collected here at the local level. The biggest local receipt that we have, which is a little over $2 million, about $2.3, $2.4 million, is motor excise taxes. So all of the cars that are registered here, garaged here in the town of Bellingham, that's called a local receipt. But it also includes things like the dog licenses or the permits for our businesses. Our building permits is another significant source of revenue. So the sum total of all of those is about $5.5 million, and that represents about 8% of our funding source. And the last one is what we call other, and that represents just over 1%. The bulk of that is really what we charge our enterprise funds for the cost of doing business for them. So our trash, our water, our sewer, and our stormwater operations, they utilize the town staff to do the accounting, to handle the payroll, to administer all of the software. So because each of those are a business entity in and of themselves, what we do is we charge back the cost of those services.
Okay.
And so they fund a portion of the expense that we incur. And that's what that fourth bucket is. So those are our four revenue streams that, that make up about the $69 million that funds our budget. So how do we allocate that money to support and provide the services that we provide to our community? Well, there's categories, and you know that I can't talk without my charts.
Makes it easy to digest, that's for sure.
Exactly. So what happens is there are generalized categories that are used across the Commonwealth that talk about expenses of a community. And those categories include general government, so essentially town hall, the departments and town hall, public safety, public works, education, culture and recreation, that includes the library and Parks Department, health and human services. So these broad categories or functional areas are where we classify our expenses and build our budgets. And so what I'd like to do is just talk a little bit about the magnitude of each on our budget. So with the general operating budget, about 48% of our budget is spent on education. So that is funding that is used to support our local school district, K through 12, here in the town of Bellingham, as well as the students who attend Blackstone Valley Tech, BVT. And it also includes the cost of transportation that we incur transporting students to our Bellingham schools, but also transporting students to outside programs that they are enrolled in. So that's the cost of education. What it does not include is the impact of charter schools, which is a conversation that we have time and time again. So that's, that's in a different area. So about 48% of our budget is for education. About 11 and 1/2% is spent on public safety. So our primary police and fire and some of our other departments, animal control and others that are also considered part of our public safety organization. So right there, just in those two categories, is about 60% of our budget. Education and public safety, 60%. We then spend about 24% on fixed costs. And those fixed costs are things like employee benefits, which include our health insurance and dental insurance programs, but also includes our pension assessment from Norfolk County for our retirement system. And it includes our debt service. So all of the projects that the townsfolk, townspeople have supported for which we've issued debt, whether it's buildings or roads or vehicles, that debt service is a fixed cost for a period of time. We spend about 24% of our budget on fixed costs. So in those three categories, we're already up to 85%. Then there's a category called state assessments, where the state takes money back from us. So they give us about a little over $12 million, and then they take back about $4 million, a little over $4 million, to support programs that are administered through the state, the largest of which is the charter school program. So we know that we have been seeing an increase in our expenses with respect to sending students to charter schools. And the town of Bellingham spends over $3 million a year on students who have chosen to go to charter schools. So it's a significant impact. So our net state aid is actually, it's not the $12 million that I talked about before, because we have to account for the expenses. So we're down to about $8 million in, in support from, from the state. So really, what's left, when you add all of those up, that comes up to about 90% across five categories. 10% is for everything else. And that means our senior center, our library, all of our local town departments, and our DPW, roads and parks and rec, all encompass about 10% of our budget.
Wow.
And so it's pretty amazing when you start to think about it that way. And, and so that's where department heads make decisions and make requests in order to provide the services to our community. And we use the resources that we have to put together the budget that we will be bringing forth next week to town meeting.
Perfect. Awesome.
All right. Second area that I'd like to talk about, so with that being said, with a $69 million budget, a lot of folks ask the question, well, what does that mean for me? And how does that translate into a tax bill? And it's a very fair question. And so what, I believe Tyler's going to show another chart. One of the things that we talk about every year when I sit with the Select Board and we talk about setting the tax rate in the fall, is we take a look at the impact of our budget on an average single-family tax bill. And we also ask, how are we doing with respect to our neighboring communities? So we are part of Norfolk County, which we are one of 28 communities that make up Norfolk County. And consistently, year over year for the last, I think my chart here is about six, six to seven years. We have consistently had the lowest average single-family tax bill. So the lowest tax burden for a residential property owner in all of Norfolk County. Interestingly enough, despite having passed an override here in the town of Bellingham, which was needed, we still continue to have the lowest tax burden across all of Norfolk County.
Yeah.
And as you can see from, from the chart here.
I think those folks at home, when you see the chart up on the screen, it's kind of mind-boggling, the range of which people in Norfolk, or the, I should say, the amount that they're paying for an average single-family house. And in most cases, where between 28th and 27th place is still about $300 to $500.
It is.
A year.
A year.
So.
It is. It is. Yeah, it's, it's fairly eye-opening when you look at it that way.
Right.
So, so then the question becomes, well, if we do have the lowest tax burden, A, how do we accomplish that? And B, is that a good thing? So let's just sort of take one aspect of that. And the question that we get asked a lot is, Bellingham has a very strong business base. And it's a very desirable community. We occupy several exits off of Route 495, which make it desirable not only for businesses to have ease of access, but also for residents who are commuting elsewhere. So Bellingham is a very attractive community, and it's, it's no surprise that there's a lot of interest from a commercial industrial base to want to locate here. There's not a lot of communities that, that have a strong business base. If you think about sort of central mass and western mass, they rely primarily on residential tax base. And in some cases, it's 100% residential tax base.
Right.
The cost of operating is borne by their residents. Here in Bellingham, that's different. So in Bellingham, about 37% of that tax levy that we were talking about before, 37% of it is paid for by your commercial industrial properties. And 63% of it is paid for by your residential tax base. So that is the benefit of having these businesses here in, in the community. In terms of empirical dollars, one of the things we talk about in my last chart that I believe we have up on the screen, is a chart that we look at every fall when we go to set the tax rate. And we look at shifting that factor, whether we shift more of the tax burden to the business base, or we shift more of the tax burden to the residential base, or we stay right where we are. And we talk about those impacts each year in order to make an informed decision. And there's consequences to moving that, and we talk about it. But one of the things I just want to share with folks, if they don't follow our, our fall meeting, is if the town were to not have this split tax rate, if we were to have a uniform tax rate, so the same tax rate that applies to residents would apply to businesses, if that were the case, based on the setting of the tax rate for last year, the average single-family home would have paid $519 more than what they are paying today. So the benefit of having businesses in town and the benefit of having the split tax rate translates specifically on an average single-family tax bill.
Right.
To about $519 or $520 in cost savings annually.
And Mary, what's the average, what's the value of the average single family? I know it's on the chart, but I can't see it with my.
Yeah, I know. These are eye charts.
I know you have a map.
It is $360,328. Three-hundred-and-sixty thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars, or about three-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars right now
Okay.
for the FY twenty-two value.
Thank you.
Yeah. I think what we're going to see, though, is a fairly significant increase in that when we get together in the fall to set the tax rate again. As you know, the real estate market is
Housing, yeah.
The housing market is very volatile. It's so hot right now, that I think we're going to see a pretty significant increase in that.
See it go jump up, yeah. Makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, as you know Cindy, we could dive into any one of these topics in greater detail, and I'd love to, but
And we will, but just not today.
I think we've sort of given a broad overview, and I hope it was informative to folks as they think about approaching and supporting the budget at town meeting next week.
I find every time I have a conversation with you, Mary, I'm learning something new. So, I thank you for your time today, and hopefully, you guys are now even better informed and are motivated to come to town meeting on Wednesday, seven-thirty, high school. All right, we'll be back next with Larry Spazata, our town clerk. Thank you. All right, welcome back for part three of Town Meeting, brought to you in the most simplest of forms, so we can ideally compel you once again to go to our town meeting coming up on Wednesday, if I haven't said it enough, seven-thirty at the high school. I am joined now with Larry Spazata, who is our town clerk. Larry, you've been in this role for three, now starting your fourth year, because you were just elected.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Larry is here today to talk to us about the actual town meeting. He's going to highlight a little bit about how our town government works, and then we're going to talk about basically the logistics and mechanics of what's going to happen on Wednesday. So, Larry, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. It's great to have this opportunity to speak with everyone. First of all, I wanted to talk about the form of government that we have here in Bellingham. It's called an open-town-meeting government, and there are four different types of municipal governments in the state. The first one is, or the lowest level, if you want to say, is the open-town-meeting. And it's the one that's actually the closest to the individuals, because any registered voter can participate.
Right.
The next level up, so to speak, and as towns get larger and so on, would be the representative town meeting whereby the registered voters in the town elect representatives to go to town meeting on their behalf.
Okay.
And that's, quite a number of people are involved in that as well, because it depends, each precinct sends a contingent
Okay.
to the town meeting. And the minimum number would be forty-five, which is ironic in the sense that at our open-town-meeting, sometimes we have numbers that are flirting with that area, in that range.
Right, in total, right.
Yeah.
Right.
And then, the level above that would be a town council, and it could, and that would replace a select board. In both of the town meeting cases, there is a select board involved. The next level, as I said, would be the council, and it can be a council without a mayor.
Okay.
And the town council then is the body, that would be the executive body
Right.
in this case, that would actually run the town. And there's usually a town manager or town administrator that would play the role of a mayor.
A mayor, okay.
And then, there's the full-fledged council with a mayor.
Okay.
And that's usually for larger cities. And we do have towns that are not technically considered cities that have those forms of government.
Okay.
The town of Weymouth, for instance. It's not a city, but it has what's called a city form of government with a council and a mayor.
Okay.
So, the important thing to take away from that is, again, as I said, the open-town-meeting is what is called the purest form of democracy, because the people actually can go and voice their opinions, and actually vote on matters that are in what's the warrant, which is where all the articles are contained. They can actually vote on those individually. And at this point in time, every vote is a secret ballot, or a private vote, because of the equipment that we use, so I'll talk about that a little bit. So, you don't have to be intimidated by neighbors that are feeling one way and you're feeling another, and feel that, you know, they're going to know how you voted. So, it's all in secret. And you have an opportunity that it's really kind of sad that a lot of people do not take advantage of. So, in the past several town meetings, we did have one that was as low as fifty, and that was a couple of years ago, and it was during the COVID pandemic, the high point of it. So, that was kind of understandable. But, we still range around a hundred-and-fifty or so, unless there's something really controversial that's being discussed.
And how many registered voters do we have in town there?
We have just over eleven thousand.
So.
So, that's like
So, that means what?
Something like point-one percent, point-zero-one percent, I believe.
Are representing, are making the decisions for all of you. So, again, it's critically important to not only be informed, which is what we're trying to do today, but to actually show up. It's a handheld device. You push one button for yes, other button for no. I'll let Larry dive into that again. But, it's an hour to an hour and a half of your time
Usually.
that we really want you to be there. So, Larry, talk a little bit about the actual voting process, because that's fairly new. Was the last two years ago, three years ago?
Just about three years.
Three years ago we introduced it.
We started it, and we've actually incorporated more technology into the process.
Right.
So, initially, when people come in, they actually do not have to know their precinct, because the system is able to deal with that. And they have to show a form of, and this is a bylaw in Bellingham that was enacted probably about ten years ago
Right.
where the participants need to show some form of ID when they are entering the town meeting. And it can be a driver's license, which is, we have the ability to scan it, so it just gets scanned through, the person gets accepted, and they just go into the meeting.
Right.
Or, if they do not have a license, or choose not to use their license, they can use any document that shows that they are addressed, like a tax bill
Bellingham address, right.
or some, yeah, so that they are, we can verify that they are a Bellingham resident. And it's a very easy process. It has actually made it much more efficient getting in. Some people might remember, a couple of years back, we had a sewer proposal for the Weathersfield area, which is precinct two primarily. And we had long lines going out the door, so the whole meeting had to be delayed to get them through, because everybody was in line at precinct two, and we were using the paper books at that time. With this new system, you do not need to go to a specific precinct, so there are five machines working, and you can go to anyone that's available. So, people get in much more quickly.
Get you in quick, right.
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 At the time that you are checked in, so to speak, you also will receive a, what we call a clicker, familiarly. It's a device, an electronic device, that allows you to vote, and it's what Cindy was alluding to just a few minutes ago. It has on it choices, yes and no, and it's very, or you can abstain as well. But, the beauty of this is that on the screen, in the town meeting hall, which is usually in the auditorium, the article will actually, the voting terminology will be up on the screen, so you'll see exactly what you're voting for.
The actual article, right.
It's not the entire article, but just sort of
The nuts and bolts.
Yeah, yeah, the nuts and bolts of it. And you have a number of seconds, which usually is about fifteen, which doesn't seem like a lot, but you'd be very surprised, it's a long time, because it only takes like a nanosecond to press a button.
Right, right.
So, what will happen is, as you press the button, it's recorded, and you can see your votes actually going up in terms of the number of votes that are being cast. And also, you will then, at the end of it, when it closes, you will see a graph, graphic representation of the vote. So, you can see how the group has voted. Nobody else knows how the individual voted, but you can see how the group voted, and you'll see, you know, which, whether it carried, whether the motion was carried, or it was defeated.
Right.
And it's all instantaneous, basically.
And that sort of leads us to the role that the moderator plays. Can you touch a little bit on that, please?
Yeah, sure. The moderator is actually the person that is in charge of the town meeting. Moderator, basically, in the town has two functions, and that is to appoint members to the finance committee, which is very important, and also to run the town meetings. The town clerk is the actual clerk of the meeting, keeps the minutes, begins the meeting by reading the warrant process.
Right.
And then, the town moderator takes over, and will actually direct the various people that, mostly members of the select board, that are reading the actual motions
Right.
for the various articles. The articles actually come from either a board in town, very often the select board, sometimes the planning board, sometimes the zoning board, but an office in town, and/or citizen petitions. And I wanted to make that, bring that up as well. People can petition to have an article. Individuals can. You have to have a certain number of signatures to have that article qualified, to be included in the warrant. But it is a possibility if someone has something that they would like to bring forward at town meeting.
Right.
The moderator will then decide, first of all, the length of time that people are able to speak is one of the things the moderator can decide, so that we don't end up in a filibuster kind of a situation.
Right, right.
And also, how it's carried out. And when I say how it's carried out, there are some times when there might be a specific article that needs to be moved either till the end, because we're waiting for something to come through, or once the moderator would like to have at the beginning. It's very unusual, but the moderator does have the ability, with a vote from the body, to actually move the articles to a different location in the warrant. So, they can bring it up front if they want. It's very rare that it happens.
Right, okay.
And the moderator also will, sets sort of the tone of the town meeting, and will, if people are getting a little too boisterous, or a little too forward, the town moderator can shut them down for the moment, have them take a rest, and start over again, or whatever.
Right, right.
But it's sort of the person that monitors, I guess, the operations of the town meeting.
Right, perfect.
I don't know if you have anything else to add to that, but that's
No, I think that's perfect. Do you have anything else you wanted to cover today? We've covered a lot, but
Yeah. The one other thing that I did want to mention is actually how the town meeting starts off, and that is with the, because people think it's just a one-night deal, I think. I'm not sure that they understand what happens. So, once the warrant is established, the select board will actually sign off on it, says that their approval, that that is their warrant for this particular town meeting. And then, there are a series of hearings that are open to the public, where people can go in and learn about the articles, and learn about what they actually mean. And I know people are very concerned these days with projects that are going on in town, and so on and so forth. And I really would like to stress that they can go to a hearing. There are public hearings for every one of those projects, where you can go in and learn about them, and understand what the project is all about, and what the roles are of the planning board and the zoning board. And they're not always the ogres that some people think they are, in some ways, because they only have the ability to really make sure that the article is in accordance with Mass. General Law and the laws of Bellingham, the both zoning and general bylaws. These are not things that they can deny just because they don't like them, or because they don't think it's appropriate, or whatever. If it is within the law, it's very difficult for those things to be denied. Also, the finance committee meets with every single department, for the most part, to review the budgets. So, there's a whole process where people can participate if they'd like. They can go to the hearings. All the budget hearings are also open to the public. So, it doesn't just start when you walk through the door at town meeting. There's a lot of stuff that you can do ahead of time, and learn more about, not only the process, but about the individual articles.
Right.
And I would urge people to do that, because sometimes you get hearsay, or you get different, varying stories. People come into my office with questions on different articles, and sometimes I will send them to the appropriate committee or board. But sometimes I also have, like, diagrams in my office, or artist renderings, or whatever, that I show them, and then they have an understanding of what they are going to be voting for.
Right.
So, you don't have to rely on hearsay, you can, you'll know yourself.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you very much for your time, Larry. Thank you all for tuning in. I hope that you found this helpful, and again, motivates you to go to town meeting, which is on Wednesday, this coming Wednesday, seven-thirty, high school auditorium.
See you there.
All you need is some form of ID, we'll hook you up with your clicker, and then you get to have a voice on the future of Bellingham. Thank you so much for your time. Have a great day.